Recording in progress.
Madam Clerk, the time is 6:33 PM. I call to order this special meeting of the Emeryville City Council. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. The City Council welcomes comments, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the City Council, or of the acts or missions of the City Council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a City Council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The City is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that City staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive and shall not be tolerated. I wanted to note, I understand the great interest in this meeting. However, this will not become a circus. Members of the public will have their time to comment during public comment. It will not be disturbed. Members of the City Council, we will not interrupt one another while we are discussing and making comments. Do we have an understanding? Council members, do we have an understanding? Thank you. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Here.
And Mayor Welch.
Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion on the final agenda?
I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Do any of the members of the City Council have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? None? Item five is public comment for items not on the agenda. Not on the agenda. If you have a public comment for items not on the agenda, not on item 6.1, if you're waiting to comment on that, you can make your comment now for two minutes. Please step up to the podium.
The mayor just said something that is false, and that is that this meeting is not going to be, I believe you said, turned into a circus. But it already is a circus, made so by you, Mayor Welch, and Councilmember Bouders, who's ready to be termed out having lost his election. So, yeah, it's a circus. So I'd like everyone here to know that Mayor Welch, over the years, has called me a fuckboy on her Twitter account, and she's called me a liar, she's called me a racist, and she's called me a misogynist. And I just wanted to say, you know, I don't appreciate that. I don't want to be called a fuckboy. My daughter, she's, you know, just recently became an adult, she doesn't want to hear that, you know, on social media about her father being a fuckboy and a racist and a misogynist and a liar. And so, I don't appreciate it. And, you know, I don't like, I don't pay my mayor to call people, you know, especially me, but any other people, citizens, ordinary people, a fuckboy. And we don't pay you for that. And beyond pay, it's untoward. It's untoward behavior. So, we don't, that's a circus to be calling us, the public, fuckboy, liar, racist, misogynist. You know, we don't appreciate that. And so, we would like the mayor to apologize for, to the extent that she's called people in the public fuckboy and other epithets. We think the mayor should apologize for that.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public?
Yes, I'd like to speak. Thank you. I just want to presence the fact that there is a genocide going on right now in Gaza, an ongoing expanding genocide. I just heard that today, there were three women who were standing online, three women who probably had multiple children, probably some of them who had been amputated in the past year with no anesthesia, who were stampeded and died while they were waiting online for bread. Okay? So, we need to do everything that we can, and you all who are sitting behind there have the responsibility to boycott, divest, and sanctions. The city of Emeryville should not be sending any money to Israel, should not be investing in Israeli bonds or anything that's supporting this genocide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please come to the podium.
This is beyond shameful. We're signaling out a person on the council. It is shameful.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment on items not on the agenda? There will be time to comment on this censure.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Cadel. I do have, I will be speaking later on the censure as well, but speaking of more, I guess, immediate local issues, I would just like to remind everyone of the serious problem we are having with these organized smash-and-grab thefts in Emeryville. I just saw a news story today about the break-in at Nirvana. I live next door to that store, okay? I have had a car driven into the building that I live in. I've seen cars driven multiple times into what used to be a dispensary about a block away from my home, as well as the GameStop, a short walk from my home. In brief, I cannot take a walk in the city that I live in with my dog that I pay taxes in without seeing boarded-up businesses, boarded-up windows, and the effects of these incredibly destructive thefts. And it just does not feel like enough is being done to address this problem. Businesses are having to put up their own barriers. They literally just built a little concrete column to put in front of a corner store. This shouldn't be necessary. It's ridiculous, and it is shameful. And I do hope that everyone on this City Council, as well as members of our law enforcement community here, will be motivated to do something. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public? All right, moving along to, now, Madam Clerk, the public comments closed. Moving along to item six, item 6.1, resolution of the City Council, the city of Emeryville, centering and imposing sanctions on Councilmember Colleen Pryforce. I will, as the councilmember that brought this forward, I will begin with a statement that lays out the violations by Councilmember Pryforce. The conduct of the City Council, of the city of Emeryville, is governed by numerous laws, including the U.S. and state constitutions, the Ralph M. Brown Act, Political Reform Act of 1974, the City of Emeryville Municipal Code, and the Emeryville Code of Ethics, among others. These laws govern conflicts of interest, financial disclosures, election campaigns, and other processes of government. The City Council wishes to maintain trust, faith, and confidence of our residents and businesses by comporting ourselves to follow the laws that govern us, and wishes to preserve and protect the reputation of the city of Emeryville with those outside of our city. We condemn persistent actions that violate these laws and regulations. The above-named laws set minimum standards, but the City Council adopted a Code of Ethics in September 2023 to set a standard higher than what is mentally required by law. Councilmember Pryforce's behavior has violated the Ralph M. Brown Act, the Political Reform Act of 1974, the Emeryville Code of Ethics, and has displayed this behavior on numerous occasions. These violations are not isolated incidents, but instead reflect a pattern of behavior that shows he regularly engages in unacceptable conduct, uses poor judgment, bringing embarrassment and disrepute to the city. The violations are as follows. The Brown Act provides a narrow set of situations where city officials may meet with city management and lawyers to discuss matters of a confidential nature, including the legal or negotiating position of the city, and protecting said discussions with privacy by prohibiting the disclosure of the content of those meetings by members of the council. These meetings are known as closed-session meetings, and confidentiality of those meetings are required by law. Councilmember Pryforce has violated closed-session confidentiality, thus violating the Brown Act even after, do not interrupt me. Do not interrupt. I already said disruption, I said disruptions will not be tolerated. You get one warning. You get one warning. One warning, Mr. Donahue. Councilmember Pryforce has violated closed-session confidentiality, thus violating the Brown Act even after being advised by the city attorney. On October 24th, 2024, while being absent from the second round of the interviews for the city manager search, Councilmember Pryforce sent an email to the city manager, city attorney, assistant city manager, and human resources director. In the email, he mentions details regarding two separate closed-session meetings. At the end of the email, he stated verbatim that he would share this email publicly. He was advised that sharing the email would be a violation of the Brown Act because it had closed-session details. Regardless of this warning, he shared the email, and a member of the public forwarded me a screenshot of Councilmember Pryforce's email stating that they had received it from him directly, and that Councilmember Pryforce requested a meeting with a member of the public to discuss the subject matter. The Political Reform Act of 1974 governs members of the City Council, including the Fair Political Practices Commission. Councilmember Pryforce has not filed the following Form 460s. Form 460 for the period of January 2023 to June 2023, due July 31st, 2023. Form 460 for period July 2023 through December 2023, due December 31st, 2024. Form 460 for period January 2024 to June 2024, which was due July 31st, 2024. Councilmember Pryforce claimed in an interview with the local blog last year that he had lost access to his campaign account, which prevented him from filing the reports, and they had hired a firm to complete his filings. In September 2024, Councilmember Pryforce filed a Form 460 for a period of a year and a half for which the information is complete, does not align with information in prior filings, and is missing required information, such as the employment information for his donors and the committee's expenditures. The city clerk has emailed Councilmember Pryforce on numerous occasions requesting that he come into compliance and submit reports for the previously mentioned periods. The city clerk has now forwarded those violations to the FPPC for investigation and review. Under FPPC rules, every day that a Form 460 is late may constitute a fine up to $10. Combining all these three reports, Member Pryforce stands to face fines in the range of thousands of dollars for his non-compliance. The FPPC has a commission-initiated complaint and open investigation against Councilmember Pryforce in case 2023-00785, based on a sworn statement for his failure to comply with fiscal reporting and transparency laws under FPPC. In the 2024 general election, Councilmember Pryforce used his own candidate-controlled campaign committee, Pryforce for Emeryville City Council 2022, to help finance the campaigns of Mia Esperanza Brown and Calvin Dillahunty. Both of those candidates filed late Form 470s, initially saying that they would not raise, receive, or spend more than $2,000 during the election. Despite this, thousands of door hangers, mail pieces, digital images and ads, and yard signs appeared in support of them with a notation that the Pryforce for Emeryville City Council 2022 Campaign Committee had paid for the materials. Neither candidate, Esperanza Brown, nor candidate Dillahunty, has filed any reports claiming to have received any in-kind contributions for the materials, and Councilmember Pryforce has not filed any required filings to show that he made contributions in support of their campaigns to their campaign committees directly as required by law. Also, having run a campaign, I'm aware of the value of these materials, including printing and postage, and I know the amount exceeds thresholds for Form 470, which again is under $2,000, and would likely require Member Pryforce to also file contribution forms. He has not filed any to date, so voters have no idea how these campaigns were financed. As I previously stated, Councilmember Pryforce claimed that he had no access to his campaign bank account and that prevented him from turning in his filings, but it appears he has access to the account and was able to spend the money on other candidates' materials. Councilmember Pryforce also claimed to be a mayor, candidate for mayor of Emeryville, an office that is ceremonial in nature and does not appear on the ballot. He solicited and received endorsements for this race, campaigned along other candidates for city council election as a candidate for mayor, creating confusion and spreading disinformation about the city's election, wasting public time and resources while eroding public confidence in our electoral processes. He falsely claimed the city and councilmembers changed the rules to prevent him from becoming mayor. No rules were changed. All members of the City Council are eligible to be nominated and serve as mayor and vice mayor. No members of the council, including Member Pryforce, nominated him to serve as mayor or vice mayor. These fiscal reporting, campaign transparency, and election dishonesty actions constitute an embarrassment to the City Council and the city of Emeryville. The City Council adopted a Code of Ethics on September 26, 2023, at a regular meeting, and it was approved unanimously with all members present. Section A, paragraph three, calls for members of the City Council to refrain from abusive conduct or personal charges or verbal attacks against other councilmembers, staff, or the public. Section B governs conduct of members, including paragraph 1C about the role of the chair running a meeting's, paragraph 2A around being respectful to members of the public at hearings, and paragraph 4A through C, which speaks to limiting your participation at committee meetings to questions only, not giving direction, intimidating, otherwise guiding the discussion, or implying they report to the councilmember. Councilmember Pryforce has attacked multiple applicants for commission committee appointments, calling them names, and speaking about them negatively. When Sam Gould brought a B-PAC appointment, he called him a troll, accused him of racial bias for responding to a social media post in which Councilmember Pryforce shared inaccurate information by providing the correct information to him, and then spoke down his qualifications. When Ned Risenikoff applied to be a member of the Housing Committee, Councilmember Pryforce accused him of being a paid lobbyist and a shill for Yenby, even though Ned is not a lobbyist and works as a housing policy analyst. He was berated for his qualifications and attacked Ned's personal view. Mr. Risenikoff has since resigned from the committee after receiving ongoing and persistent harassment. When Councilmember, former Councilmember Diane Martinez applied to be on the planning commission, Councilmember Pryforce mocked her, laughing, saying that when he is done with the City Council, he will just go and won't stick around and try to keep doing things, implying that her ability to serve the city ended when she did not seek reelection to the council. He questioned her qualifications, among many other applicants to city commissions and committees in ways that are not welcome, inclusive, or positive. Councilmember Pryforce has used social media to bully and attack other members of the City Council, notably myself and Councilmember Bouders. He has falsely called us corrupt and accused us of federal crimes, taking bribes and payoffs from interests he does not like, and made statements that messed represent his colleagues and staff members in our service to the city. All this is rooted in fiction and a part of a political game he is playing to undermine the credibility of his colleagues. He has promoted, shared, and perpetuated lies about his colleagues for personal gain, and he often plays victim, making baseless claims that he has been targeted by colleagues or members of the public. Meanwhile, he engages in Donald Trump-like tactics, giving abusive nicknames to colleagues and turning people, I said... Giving abusive nicknames to colleagues and turning people against others in an attempt to deflect from his own responsibility. I... The Code of Ethics provides for sanctions when a member repeatedly engages in one or more violations of the Code of Ethics. Member Pryforce previously called for a Code of Ethics, and when it was developed, he seconded the motion to approve the code, voting for it. However, he's the only member who has declined to sign the Code of Ethics, indicating he believes he is above the law and the rules that govern all councilmembers. I have requested this agenda item due to totality of the circumstances that show he is unwilling to comport himself in the manner of becoming of a City Councilmember. I have already asked the public, there will not be any disruptions. There will not be any disruptions. You will get your time to speak. This, Mr. Tam? Thank you. The resolve clauses are finding the following. A finding that he has violated the laws and regulations governing his activities as a member of the City Council on numerous occasions, and that these are not an isolated incident but reflect a pattern of behavior that show he regularly engages in unacceptable conduct and uses poor judgment, bringing embarrassment to the city. A finding that the City Council is tired of his antics and persistent violation of laws around transparency, accountability, confidentiality, and decency, and knowing that he claims victimhood to escape responsibility for his own actions. A finding that condemns his actions but also invites him to reaffirm his oath of office, to adhere to the laws that govern our activities as members, and encourage him to publicly apologize to the people of Emeryville for these past actions. Councilmember Pryforce, you now have the ability to respond to those violations. Councilmember Pryforce, you now have the ability to respond to those violations.
Thank you all for coming, taking time from your filled schedules and busy lives to take part in this exercise of democracy. For some of you, thank you for showing up for me. Today, I cannot say a lot. I have questions, and so do you. But legally, I have been advised to hold myself back just a little because there are bigger fights that are coming. So I have a request, that as you provide public comments, and I hope that the time you are given is enough, if you do not wish to speak, you can give your time to someone else who has more to say. My request is that you speak your truth, but in a way that will be heard by those outside these walls. For investigative purposes, your words matter. You matter. Those two words, "you matter," was why I ran for office. I've only been doing this for two years. So I'm still at the beginning. But to take a line from one of my favorite authors, Frank Herbert, the creator of Doom, "A beginning is the beginning, a beginning is the time for taking the most delicate care that the balances are correct." On this day, December third, but a different year, nineteen oh seven, President Roosevelt gave a message to the American people at a time when wealthy, powerful businessmen were coming together and forming trusts, and therefore monopolizing industries. In his words, "In any large body of men, however, there are certain to be some who are dishonest." And if the conditions are such that these men prosper or commit their misdeeds with impunity, their example is a very evil thing for the community. Those men President Roosevelt is describing back then didn't look like me. They didn't sound like me. They didn't come from where I come from. But although times have changed, the people who stand to hurt us the most can look like us. And sometimes, they sound like us. But they not like us. Because the name of the game is still about power. Who has it, and who gets there stripped, raped, colonized, gentrified, sanctioned, and recalled? The violence is still the same. Since the moment I ran for election, members of this body have sought to reverse the outcome of an election. In two thousand and twenty two, as a black man, a Haitian man, a Buddhist and a Catholic, a hacktivist, a White House champion of change, an educator, and entrepreneur with long locks that carries a walking stick aid, I gained the majority of your vote. You did that, Emeryville. That is our potential as a city to do more and be more. An orphan from Brooklyn foster care homes, I've taken your vote and made it sing throughout these halls by championing tenant protections and pushing for rent control. By questioning why we have barriers to home ownership or make it harder for small businesses, legacy businesses, to stay in Emeryville. Fighting for public, better public safety by working with our officers in our community, showing up for our babies in our schools, and listening to what our seniors have to say about how they want to spend the rest of their years on this earth. I am a progressive, and I'm damn proud of it. Nothing, absolutely nothing that my council colleagues have done have shrunken who I am. But that doesn't mean they'll stop trying, and they're not alone. Today, you will hear public comments from those who orchestrated recalls of public officials. Those who made it financially lucrative for ve- for them to reverse the will of the people and use the money of wealthy tech and real estate barons to do it. She's not on our side, but guess whose side she's on? You will hear public comments from real estate lobbyists who will insult your intelligence by claiming that they are not who they say they are, or that the advocacy group that they are employed by did not contribute ten thousand dollars to a member on this council through a separate fund. He is not on our side, but guess whose side he is on? You're going to hear from people who want themselves to be judged differently for their behaviors while they subject others to censure and sanction. They seek favoritism, not justice. What you are going to hear today is an apology from me, not to the status quo, but to you. I'm sorry, Emeryville. I'm sorry, Emeryville, for how your taxpayer money is being used to support a kangaroo court who love to intimidate, but they can't take it when someone brings an activist rap battle against a high school R and B. I'm sorry, Emeryville, that while you are facing evictions, skyrocketing PG and E costs, also a campaign contributor to a member of this body, and want better opportunities for your kids and safer streets to ride on, time is being given to Drake-like behavior against your Kendrick Lamar movement. I know you want the drama to end. I know you want the rottenness to end. I know you want the page to finally be turned on a new chapter in our politics, a government that places your needs first. And for many of you, a Democratic Party that actually cares for working people and working families. Since the beginning, I have done everything I could with you to strike a balance of priorities in City Hall. An independent public ethics commission is how we get there. For those in attendance and those who are watching, it doesn't matter if they want to have the last word when you are the star witness that Emeryville needs an independent public ethics commission. So no matter the outcome or how predetermined the results seem to be, movements aren't successful overnight. They take time. The Emory Rising Movement is bigger than me because it started with you standing up for your city. I'm just a kid from Brooklyn who joined along. In the words of Churchill, this is not the end. It's not even the beginning of the end, but it is perhaps the end of the beginning. Demand public oversight in Emeryville, and let's reach that chapter together. Thank you, city staff. Thank you, residents and workers and guests to our city, my city. Those are my comments.
Now is the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on the item can do so now for two minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Sarah Perez. Um, I am an Emeryville resident. I have served, uh, as a public servant for almost a decade. I am a union executive of one of the largest unions in the Bay Area. I have brought a friend with me, my dear friend Julian, who is also another union executive, also an executive on the Alameda Labor Council. Uh, the issue is concerning that you're not operating in the best interest of the city, in the interest of the people, by using implicit bias to sanction Mr. Pryforce, the only black man on this council. As an Afro-Latin woman, I'm concerned standing before a council that has a history of unethical and unfair labor policies because these determinations negatively impact people who look like me. There was a time that the council voted to lower the minimum wage for the working class, a measure that was introduced by Mr. Botters. This measure would especially have hurt minorities. The decision haunted Botter's political prospects, which is evident in his recent loss. Just like the decision tonight will haunt you, Member Welsh, Member Mora, and Member Carr. We deserve a council that is for the people, and we deserve to live in a city that promotes equity and fosters accountability. We, what we don't want and what we don't need is cronyism. I am one of the many on this, in this city, who will be fighting for independent public ethics commission as a result of your corruption, which is evident here tonight in more than one way. I hope that Emeryville does not become another Bell California. And that is why we need the Public Ethics Commission. So I encourage all the people to vote because I will be putting it out to as many people as I can.
For your comment?
Thank you for your time.
Next commenter?
Good evening. Uh, my comments are specifically directed towards Member Bowders, Mayor Welch, Vice Mayor Mora, and Member Cowher. While I am aware of the nature of the charges being made against Councilman Pryforce and the speculation that people have made about the motives behind these charges, that's not what I'm here to talk about today. I would like to address the city council today on the topic of pragmatic leadership. Put simply, now is not the time for infighting within our city government, not when we are less than fifty days away from the takeover of our federal government by forces hostile to the concept of democracy and the dignity of all Americans, a president who is known to be hostile to this state in general and to our communities in particular. Not when our largest neighbor, Oakland, stands without an elected mayor or a district attorney. We need our leadership focused on how we will survive the coming four years of political winter. We cannot afford to have our city council divided against itself, shutting out council members because of leftover grudges from the last election. We need every pair of hands on deck, fighting for Emeryville's survival, finding the path forward despite the grim challenges that are coming to us in two thousand and twenty five. We already face ongoing crises: homelessness, organized theft, the smash and grabs that I was talking about earlier, pervasive vandalism. This is just naming a few of the problems our community is struggling with. How will we endure the additional pressure of a Trump administration with a divided city council, with a divided democratic leadership in the East Bay?
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, Mayor Welch. My name is Joanna Chuklava. I'm an attorney, a community organizer, and elected delegate to the California Democratic Party, representing Oakland, Alameda, and Emeryville. And since I'm not an Emeryville resident, I recognize that I don't know all the ins and outs of what's been happening here. But what I do know, and what I have a question for you, is this. Where is democracy? Where is democracy in Emeryville when members of the public cannot give public comment online? Where is democracy when, when you passed a Code of Ethics, which is wonderful, although quite late? You did not establish a independent public oversight commission. Where is democracy when members of this body can work to, the majority of members on this body can censure anybody on this council who they don't agree with, simply because they're holding different positions? Where is democracy? When Councilmember Pryforce is facing censure and silencing, and with him being silent, the entire people, the group of people, his constituents who voted for him are also being silenced. Is this democratic? Is it democratic to use your positions of power as the majority to silence somebody who is a minority on this body because of the political alliances that are present here? And so that is my question. Where is democracy right now? And it truly saddens me that at a time when this nation is facing literal white supremacy and fascism, we here in the Bay Area are fighting with each other. Why are we fighting with each other? Right? We have much bigger fights coming ahead of us, and like this person before me said, it is critical that we may...
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
One moment. We are not, excuse me, excuse me. We are not interrupting people during public comment. We are not interrupting anyone during public comment.
Mayor, may I please request, um, that the disruption on my left be, uh, required? I cannot hear the public comment because of what's going on on my left.
Please, can that be... Lieutenant, do you need any assistance?
I've been captain.
When the time is up, if you... Madam Clerk, the time, please.
My name is Brenda Grisham. I am the principal officer of SAFE, the successful recall of District Attorney Pamela Price. I am here, I have to one hundred percent support the Emeryville City Council in the censure of Councilman Camila Preforce. I have no idea who this man is. He has publicly, publicly disrespected me as an advocate of thirteen years, a mother who has lost their son, don't know me from anybody, but you go on social media and disrespect a black woman, a mother. And you stood right here today and kept portraying falsehoods. I've been doing this work for thirteen years for free. And I will continue to do this work. You represent the city of Emeryville in the things that you do. That is disrespectful. You have disrespected me. You have disrespected my family. You have disrespected my children. You have disrespect, disrespected three hundred and seventy-four thousand citizens of Alameda County. You should be censored. Do not interrupt. You... And that's what I'm talking about right there. So you portrayed a falsehood that there's black, dark, dark money, dark money. You haven't proven any dark money. Where is it? Where is it? But you have went on social media. You have went, that's right, show your proof. You have went on social media, making these claims. But you sit here like you're innocent. You're not innocent. I don't know what you're telling these people, but you're not innocent. You've never been innocent. You're disres...
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker, please.
I'll cede my time to Brenda.
That's fine.
And you thought I forgot, but I did not forget. I've watched you... I've watched you...
Do not interrupt the speaker.
As a council member for Emeryville, you don't do it as just you. You do it in the name of this city. Every disrespectful act, which is in, which is in, which is in the paperwork, because you chose to put it on public notice, but you cannot see where I have ever disrespected you. But you stood right here today and mentioned me because you saw me.
Do not interrupt her. She's had time, we ceded to her.
The way a councilperson is supposed to act? No, it's not. They are 100% right in censuring you because you are making the city of Emeryville look a mess. I'm gonna ignore your friends because they don't know. What'd you say?
Ms. Grisham, please just, Ms. Grisham, please finish your comment.
This whole, this whole, this whole event is just disrespectful. You guys are disrespectful, you're council members, you're disrespecting the public. I'm done because this is a mess, but you needs to be censured. And I fully, 100% support each and every one of you. You too, I support you 100%.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm going to remind absolutely everyone, everyone deserves a chance to speak. They will get a chance to speak. If someone cedes their time to you, you can finish their two minutes. Please, if you want to applaud after someone speaks, that is fine. You are not going to interrupt anyone speaking.
Thank you. Please approach a podium.
Hello, I'm Celeste Burrows. I'm a third-year resident, and I live at Watergate. I'm sorry to have to be here today, although I used to like working with City Council on city affairs. But today's council doesn't behave like the council we used to have did, and it doesn't behave with dignity or the respect for each other that council did back then, when I first became engaged with the city. Back then, to defeat an opponent, a politician used elections, and they didn't, they did not then make attempts to completely destroy another politician personally and professionally, nor do I recall the kind of anger that we see displayed here through the kind of actions that are being taken. So I will use the pronoun "they" for she, he, and they. To have people who cannot control their own mouth or their own behavior, to have them bring charges against the one who points this out to the electorate is bizarre. But it's the kind of thing we've gotten used to on the national scene, so why not, why not do it here too? And council members now have rules which empower the council to be not only the sole prosecutor, but also the judge and the jury on each case, even if their actions are being taken out of personal revenge or to further their own political aspirations. This is what our system allows. But there's something wrong with this system, and we don't have to follow it. We can end it. We can end it tonight or very soon. I hope, but I'm not confident, that remaining council members can see these actions for what they are and instead have the wisdom and the courage to act in a way that brings us closer to the kind of council that we need, that we need now to be able to manage our city well in these challenging times.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor Welch, City Council, I appreciate your time, and I will show you the respect that unfortunately it appears you haven't been able to show each other. President Bill Clinton went interviewed and asked about the impeachment and the scandal that almost removed him from office. This is what he had to say, quote, "I think I did something for the worst possible reason, just because I could." I think that's the most, just about the most morally indefensible reason that anybody could have for doing anything, when you do something just because you could, end quote. Isn't this what it's all about tonight? Isn't that what the censure is about? Because you could? You have the votes, and I honor your positions, and I respect your votes, but there are a lot more votes on this side of the dais. And emotions are running, or motions are running high on both sides. I consider Councilmember Preiforce a friend, but most importantly, he's a friend of Emeryville. And I think all of you are friends of Emeryville. You all want what's best for the city. There are going to be disagreements. There are going to be hurt feelings, but we can't allow a mob mentality. You have to have a sober approach, I implore you. Don't let this be your legacy. Former Mayor Bouders, you have given so much to this city, some failures, many successes. Don't let this be your legacy. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rosemary Brooks. I'm not from here. I moved to Emeryville about four months ago. And I too, and my mom, I'm here. And I'm here because Kalima Preiforce was here for me and a lot of the parents in the district, when no one would listen to me and they would tell me that a lot of the things that were happening to my children at school, my son was stabbed in the face, he was choked, he was asking me if I wanted to throw him away because as soon as he started fighting back, they were suspending him, and he's only four. I brought him here today. He's here. I'm here because a lot of the times that I've asked for help, they would tell me, "No, this is the city problem." And then when I would go to the City Hall, they would tell me, "No, this is a district problem." So who do we run to? As a mom, like, who do I ask? I ask parents. All of them have issues, and they say they don't know who to talk to. There's no resources. There's no help. There's no care. I've emailed a lot of you people here, and I never got an answer. I just, I don't know about this political stuff. I don't know how to speak. I'm from New York City. I am known from ghetto, ratchet, all those things, but I'm a fight for my kids, and he has motivated me to start the first PTA in Emeryville. And I'm just here to say thank you. I don't know what this, everything is about, and I don't know why they're coming for you, but they hated Jesus too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Edward Escobar, and I've noticed a three-ring circus here, so if you could contain yourselves and show some respect...
Do not interrupt the speaker.
I'm the founder of the Coalition for Community Engagement, and I've been attacked back here verbally, accosting me verbally, stating that I'm a white racist. I'm Cuban and Puerto Rican. Okay? Así que, the problem here is that obviously Kalima Preiforce is here under censure. And whatever. Penalties for council members who engage in berating behavior can vary depending on the severity and the context of the actions. Censure is one of them, removal from committees, ethics investigations, legal consequences, if the behavior crosses into harassment or defamation, which I've witnessed that personally. Legal action could be taken. This might include lawsuits or criminal charges depending on the nature of the conduct. Public apology, which he mentioned, the council member might be required to issue a public apology. Training and counseling, also a fine on extreme cases, they could face also a recall. And just so that you know, we're quite capable in that department. So, yes, we are the recallers, and we achieve the results, and the people have spoken. It's a very democratic process, okay? You need to, you need to do your studying, get to know what the state constitution says. But enough of this three-ring circus. Kalima Preiforce claims, he says that "you matter."
Do not interrupt the speaker.
This is not about you, sir. This is about "we matter." When you're here, you need to put aside the "you," and it's about "we." It's about "us," and that's where you've lost your way, sir. So whatever censure needs to be done...
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'm here because the residents of Alameda County spoke up, and they spoke up overwhelmingly to have our public elected officials be accountable to the residents of Alameda County. That means 374,000 voters voted to recall. So why would you disenfranchise all these residents and take away their democratic right to recall failed electors? We should hold our electors accountable to the highest standards, and if they fail us, yes, censure them and recall them if we have to, because unless we take action,
Do not interrupt the speaker.
Because unless we take firm action, people could die. That's why my friend, Brenda Grisham, stood up. For 13 years, she represented victims, murdered victims, and their families. And for Preiforce to attack her and her family is, is not acceptable. You should hold your elected council members to a higher standard. That is not a behavior of a leader. That is a behavior of a leader who provide public safety, who represent moms and dads and brothers and sisters who were facing violence. She acted out of her goodness, conscience, and loads of free time. She should be respected. What should be not respected is somebody who attacks somebody like her, who represents over 374,000 voters. So I ask you to stand firm, stand with the hundreds of thousands of Alameda County residents who voted to back her and not to back somebody who disrespect a mother.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Mayor. I don't know you, but I'm new to Emeryville. My name is Marcella Cross, and everybody in Emeryville probably knows me because I say hi to everybody. Have a great day. Happy holidays to all y'all. But Mr. Kalima, he has been very nice to me. You know, I just moved here from Emeryville, and I have my own story and my own struggle. And you know, my, some of my neighbors, one of my neighbors don't like me very well, and they've been harassing me, okay? I know a quiet hour is in any state, because my sister is a police, FBI, and whatever else. So it's 10 to 8. So I had a problem, and of course, I'm handicapped, and I am a senior citizen. He came to my house on his own time and literally helped me move my house around. So I wouldn't have these problems. And every time I needed his help or I needed to call him, he's available to me. And whenever the fire alarm goes off, we have a problem in our building, he always there first to help the people and aid and assist them. All this other political stuff, I don't think he's like Donald Trump. I meant Donald Trump. I hate Donald Trump. I am a Democrat, and that's character assassination for you to sit up there and say he's like Trump. Anything else you have to say, you have a right to say, but to assassinate him, that's not okay, because I think he's a good guy. I think he's a very nice guy, and he does cater to the public. So Emeryville, I'm not going nowhere. I'm staying in Emeryville. I don't care who wants to put up a fight. I will fight for my rights. We all have a right of choice and freedom, and what we like or we don't like. But to assassinate a man, and you guys are on the board, I don't see fit. I find that very wrong, because not just morally, but in political status. You guys are belittling yourself and the whole community to say he's like Donald Trump. That is my friend, and I find him a good man, and God bless everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make public comment can do so now for two minutes.
Really? You're taking him off all the committee positions because he messed up forms and is mean? Okay. If you're, if you're so afraid of the wolves, stay out of the woods. Also, John Bouders, you lost because you're a petty fuckboy. Free Palestine.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'm Fran, I'm Fran Cootel. I serve on a couple of committees in the city. I think I'm pretty well-known to the people on the council. I just want to say I've gotten an education tonight that I don't think I've had in 30 years, but I want to speak to you as a member of a committee. I really enjoy coming to council meetings and seeing the depth of research and the depth of detail and the depth of attention to the matters of the city that are important. And that's really what I want to hear you do tonight. This is a challenging time. We have a lot of things that require serious attention, and I myself want to see every member of City Council come to meetings and be prepared to really address the issues at hand. I also want to come to City Council meetings and not be afraid or intimidated or shouted at or photographed. That, to me, is harassing behavior. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Godfrey Wilson. I'm from St. Columba Church and a number of different organizations, men organizations. I've been here for quite some time, been in the city for quite some time, then I moved and went to different places, and now I'm coming back. Coming back specifically for this meeting to talk about how this man has helped the community, has helped the community by going personally, going out and dealing with it. And there's some things, there's an order about things, and I haven't heard all the order that he should have gone through or helped, received help for, I should say, so that he can stay on the council in good standing. Now, one thing that really pissed me off was that he didn't say his name right. People coming up here disrespecting him. That's real disrespect, and they do that to black folks all the time, and it pisses me off. Everybody knew his name. They told him what his name was. So don't come up here and say his name wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Davila. I don't live in Emeryville. I'm a former council member of the city of Berkeley, and I have to say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud. And I'm, I'm so proud that my friend here has done the job that he's done on this City Council, and I know if it weren't for him being a black man, and actually a big black man that has a big voice and is listened to and is supporting the community, that he wouldn't be in this predicament that he is in now. So y'all need to do the right thing. We are in a racist state of America. Turtle Island has been racist and genocidal from the get-go. Now we have a fascist coming to town, and you're trying to take another black man down. That is not okay. So please, do the right thing. Let the man do his job that he's been doing and the community supports. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and City Council members, my name is Paola La Verde. I am currently a member of the Alameda County Democratic Party Central Committee. I'm an elected member. I'm a former Rump Court Commissioner, an elected member of the city of Berkeley, and I'm a proud member of the Berkeley Tenants Union. And I have to say that Councilmember Preiforce has been very, very instrumental in trying to get protections for tenants in Emeryville. He came to the Berkeley Tenants Union and started to start an Emeryville Tenants Union because, you know, Emeryville is full of apartments, and yet the tenants don't have any protections, no protections. I've had one time with Mayor Welch, before she was mayor, on X, our Twitter... on X, our Twitter, I asked her a comment, and I started asking questions around some issues on housing, and I got shot down and very rudely dismissed. I was told to go protect some parking lots. Some parking lots. I have photos of that because I saved them because I thought, I was like, oh my gosh. I could not believe that I was spoken to that way. So there is a lot of animosity, and it's been created because, you know, as a person who's really fighting for tenants' rights, and I see how this has been, you know, people who are being, you know, supported by organizations that don't believe that tenants, as consumers in the rental housing market, should have any protections. We are consumers. And I very much support the council member and his efforts to provide tenants with protections because we are consumers in the rental housing industry. So please, we need these type of people, tenant advocates, to be on all city council members of city councils because tenants are not being protected because there are too many of the city council members are bought and paid for. Their campaigns are financed by organizations that do not, corporations that don't believe-
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Ilana Auerbach, and I have been a longtime resident of the East Bay. I live in Berkeley. And Councilmember Pre-Force is the type of leader that we need. He is the type, he is a leader who speaks truth as power. He is a leader who is righteous in his commitment to the people, to all the people, to make the people better, to make our lives better, to help people. You have heard the people come up tonight who he has helped on his own time. Mothers, seniors, disabled people, and I'm sure there's many, many others. There's many in Berkeley, where I live, who he's helped, including myself and my family. And so this is the type of leader, an upstanding, honest, respectful, and respected leader. You talk, Madam Mayor, about in what you're accusing Councilmember Pre-Force of, the disrepute to the city. Well, this is the city, this is the community back here. And we stand behind, by far, Councilmember Pre-Force. The details were about you berating him, Madam Mayor, at a closed session meeting. And so that is what I understand was he was disclosing and making public that behavior that was not part of that. It was outside the code of ethics. And I'm grateful that the city of Emeryville does have a code of ethics, which we in Berkeley don't have yet. But everybody needs to be held to the same standard. You're the council member to your right, Madam Mayor. There was a video that I saw of a friend of his that punched out someone who was talking, who was asking about names, really horrible names, that he was, may I have some time?
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
I'm getting time.
Did you come to the podium, please?
Madam Clerk, the time, please. Thank you, City Clerk. Yes, so that, who used terrible name-calling of Councilmember Pre-Force, and then one of his friends, or, you know, I don't know, punched out, I guess it was you. I mean, it was him. Because he, and this was all caught on video. We don't have, the only people who are here who are saying, "Censure him", besides you, and maybe you, Councilmember Bowers, are the people who stood for the recall of one of the most inspired and progressive and transmutational, transmuting hour criminal injustice system to something that's restorative and has set the foundation. And so all those 374,000 votes that they got was because of the money that was spent and the fear-mongering that happened and that influenced this authoritarian fascist move towards imprisoning more people. And imprisoning, who gets imprisoned? Black and brown people, of course. People who look like Councilmember Pre-Force. So what I'd like you to do is, this is a man who has inspired people to public service. This is the kind of leadership you all should be proud of to sit up there on the dais with you. And so I ask, I really ask and plead with you that you let this go. Please, let's come together. There are new council members who will be joining this body. We have a president coming on board in January that we all need to unify, protect our most at-risk immigrant and people who are most at risk of this new regime coming in into Washington DC, and put this petty nonsense behind us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Austin Tam. I'm on the Alameda County Democratic Central Committee and California Democratic Party Executive Board. And I want to thank you, Brother Kalima, Kalima for, I'll miss my last name, sorry, for all you do. And I've learned so much about you. And what is happening is shameful. It is like he's on trial. He's like being crucified. This is shameful. I cannot understand. This is shame, yeah, shameful. This is shameful that instead of working on pressing issues in your community, and rather than go, why don't you attack it instead of going against MAGA and Trump and insurrectionists, you want to go against your own person, own colleague? Someone who's a Democrat, a colleague, a progressive? We can all disagree at times and stuff, but this is ridiculous and shameful. Majority of you guys were just elected, or re-elected. I'm sorry to say, unfortunately, re-elected in November, I forgot what day, November, whatever it was called. And this is what you start out with? I don't, I do not understand. I cannot comprehend this. Can you guys help me understand this? This is beyond shameful. If Trump and the insurrectionists was coming down, we would be doing this. This is a bad precedence. Okay, so what's gonna happen next is like, if someone has the majority on this council, so we're gonna say, "Censure Courtney Walsh, censure this, censure, censure, censure", I don't know the rest of the names, but, you know. Are we gonna do that? That's gonna set precedent and open the Pandora's Box. We have more pressing things. We can't even think about humanity disagreements. We have disagreements in families. Do we try to censure and recall? And do we censure and recall people in our family? We can't recall them, unfortunately, but, you know, but I'm just, you need to speak out of love. We're speaking out of compassion tonight. That's what we're speaking out of. And this is not, this is not a circus. What is circus is censuring this wonderful special person.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make a comment can do so now for two minutes.
Hi, my name is Bridget Acuna. I'm a public health educator, longtime resident in the Bay Area. I want to say that Kalima is an inspiring, fierce person. And like others have said, this is what we need, especially now. And I wrote some notes, you know, in response to others. But I really think it comes down to this. I don't know you, Courtney, but you need to let this one go. Because Kalima is appreciated, respected. Sometimes you get into disagreements. But don't let what I would consider to be obvious, trumped-up charges, hiding behind a gavel and a daze like this, it doesn't make you look good. It's not your strength. It's not your strength. Be, go, step up. Step up higher. Step up higher. We need you to step up, let the grudge go, listen deeply, listen deeply. We all need to be represented. There is a lot going on. People are on the streets, are suffering. You know this. Courtney, you know this. Find it in yourself. Let it go. You don't want this to be your legacy. You don't. We are all witnesses to this. It was obvious in what you read. It was so lengthy and so tedious. It was obviously a grudge. Doesn't make you look good. I want to see better from you, Courtney. So thank you for listening. And I'm really appealing to you to step up.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make a comment can do so now for two minutes.
Good evening, council. Also, Peanut Gallery, please respect me as I respect you. I'm Alexis Gould, and I'm here to say, to speak in support of the censure of Councilmember Pre-Force. As a resident of Emeryville, I find Councilmember Pre-Force's behavior to be unacceptable for an elected public official. I spoke in favor of the code of ethics when it was enacted for many of the same reasons I'm here today. My husband has been the target of many character attacks by Councilmember Pre-Force during city meetings, as was cited earlier in his charges. Councilmember Pre-Force has derogatorily referred to my husband as "the troll of Emeryville", attacked his application for a committee position, and described it as, I quote, "piss-poor" during a city council meeting, wrote disparaging articles about my wife-
Do not interrupt the speaker.
Respect me!
Do not interrupt the speaker.
And he even attended a B-PAC meeting where he threatened the members of the committee to attempt to change my husband's behavior. And after all of this, finding out that Councilmember Pre-Force has refused to sign the very code of ethics that he advocated for and even voted in favor of adopting disturbs me to my core. His refusal to sign shows that he is unwilling to take accountability for his unprofessional behavior and has zero intention of being an ethical member of our city government. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, you have the time.
Hello, I am Sam Gould, and I am here to speak in support of the censure of Councilmember Pre-Force. His open dismissal of fair election practices and lack of transparency go beyond negligence and challenge the public's trust in our government. After failing to disclose his campaign finances for over a year and a half, Councilmember Pre-Force filed a form signed under penalty of perjury in the state of California showing he collected contributions without disclosure of donor occupations. State law requires all money collected in this way be returned within 60 days, but instead, he used it to fund the races of two candidates that promised to appoint him as mayor, as he openly stated while seeking endorsements for his fake mayoral campaign. He proceeded to not disclose any contributions to these candidates despite their campaign literature prominently featuring his FPP CID and Emory Rising redirecting to his personal website. Financial transparency should be the minimum we expect from our city council. And the fact that he has not disclosed these spendings, even when facing censure, shows that he believes he is above the law. You're talking about dark money in politics. You can see it right here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Quiet in the audience, please. Quiet in the audience, please, for the next speaker. Madam Clerk.
Hello, I'm sorry. But I don't really know what's all going on, but I'm just here to talk about Kalima and what he means to the community. And so I wrote some things down. And the first one is, that carelessness to others brings ruin. Care to others, we build for the better. So for me, I can't see anyone limiting this man's power. You know, right now, the nation, the people have spoken. You know, they have forgiven the transgressions in the highest office. And now we have a standard of equality. And it's a legal precedence that's set right now. Kalima has sacrificed his time and his energy to protect and serve the community while asking for little. He has been the voice of the community to make matters of safety, well-being heard by a cooperation with deaf, by cooperation with deaf ears. You know, for me, it's a consistent commitment for what he's done to our community because he's been there for me personally. He's been there for me and my sister when my sister died. No one else in the community, except for one other person, was there. And then there was an instance that happened only a couple of weeks ago, when there was a fire. And there was no, no security, no personnel, no managers, no nothing. And he was the only one, late at night, 1:00 in the morning, helping to organize all of us to safety, to make sure that we knew where to go and what to do.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes, thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to comment can do so now for two minutes?
Hello, my name is Michael. I'm a resident of Emeryville, unlike some of the people that have spoken before. I look at you, I'm gonna remember your names and faces. I'm not gonna bother pronouncing them or mispronouncing them, except for Kalima Pre-Force. That's how you pronounce his name. You stood there, all of you, and in an ultimate show of disrespect, didn't bother to correct some racist people who deliberately mispronounced his name several times. So you should all look in the mirror. You, Mayor, have been accused. You, Mr. Batters, have also been accused, sorry, Mr. Bowers, I apologize, have also been accused of unethical behavior. You can't investigate yourself. You're not, at least you're not willing to because you have a majority in support. So why not have an independent ethics committee? I support Kalima in that. Lastly, I want to say, you like to use your gavel as a means of aggression. This is America. We have the First Amendment. I don't know what violates your harassment policies. I'm sure none of you do either. Apparently, all of you, or at least you two that I'm looking at, Councilmember Bowers and Mayor Welsh, excuse me, Welch, seem to be able to bully people and not know that you're doing it, or you're confident the majority will support you. I ask you to look in the mirror. I'm gonna remember all of you for the actions you take today.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make a comment can do so now for two minutes?
Mayor Welsh, council members of Emeryville. Thank you for having this hearing today. I'm here to state I stand for Councilmember Kalima Pre-Force and request an independent ethics commission who can be impartial in their decision-making. You cannot be impartial because your feelings have been hurt. So your decisions will be biased, and so on with your supporters. Anyone who is elected, a member of the Democratic Party on the Central Committee that is against Kalima Pre-Force, please stand up and come to the front. Against him, that's elected, or a delegate of the California Democratic Party, or the Central Committee against Kalima Pre-Force, please come up here and stand with me. Those who are for Kalima Pre-Force and support him, that is a member, just like me, a California delegate representing Emeryville, Oakland, and Alameda, please come up and stand with me. I think Emeryville, Alameda, and Oakland represent 500,000 people, about 520,000, together collectively. Anyone else that is a former elected that stands with Kalima Pre-Force, please stand up. Come on up here. Any community members that stand for Kalima Pre-Force, please stand up. These are former elected and also the residents. The majority of people here are here to stand and support Kalima. Councilmember Kalima Pre-Force, because he has done nothing wrong. Who has been censored in the past-
Thank you for your comment.
One person that's been censored in the past-
Thank you for your comment.
Are people whose rights have been taken away because-
Desmond, Desmond, thank you for your comment. Thank you.
And I want to hear, thank you.
You must come to the podium.
There we go.
Give him another two minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So these are the people- So, these are the people that Kalima Pryforce represents. The only time people were censored were because they were against the war in Vietnam, they were against the World War I, they were standing, they were against authority who was doing wrong and enslaving people. This is where censorship started, and we're seeing the same thing today. Anytime you try to tell the truth, whether it's on Twitter or Facebook, what happens to your posts? They get deleted and removed, and you get attacked. That is censorship, that is fascism. The founding fathers, being a political person, a council member, a representative of the elected body, has discourse. They have the right to represent their community and people and tell people the truth. The only people that want to censor an individual or another council member, elected people, is because they don't want to hear the truth. And if that's what you're trying to do, it's not a good look, as one person said before. So, I encourage you and beseech you to not vote on this item. I encourage you to start an independent ethics commission because that is the right and proper thing to do. We all here, this is a community standing for representing Emeryville, Oakland, the East Bay, Berkeley, and we are here to stand with this young black man that's representing the people. Now, if he was saying all those things that you guys mentioned, this room will be filled with people in opposition, cursing him out, but it's not. It's not. What I see here is a room filled with people that love, support, and stand like they're standing now with Kalima Pryforce. Thank you, Kalima.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wishing to make public comment can do so now for two minutes?
Just because you brought up Trump and accused Kalima of being Trump-like, I think what a lot of us are really scared about with Trump coming back in is that he's going to pursue petty, personal, and political vendettas against people who stood up to him or share a different feeling on some issues, basically that stood up to him and rankled him and bugged him because they wouldn't buckle under to whatever position Trump was putting forward. I think what's happening here, as the woman said, it's obvious, just let it go. You got to let it go. You guys lost, you backed her, she didn't win, Kalima's slate won. But, at any rate, if you want to get rid of Trump in the city council, don't pursue a petty, personal vendetta. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make comment can do so now for two minutes? Another way to the podium.
Okay, so, I think what we heard here loud and clear tonight is Councilmember Pryforce is a progressive, and then the four other council members are something below progressive, more conservative. But Emeryville, the people of Emeryville are progressive, and we know that because we've seen how they voted over the years, and we've seen how they voted for Councilmember Pryforce in huge numbers. He beat the pants off of Courtney Welsh, the mayor, in the election. Yeah, yeah, sorry. She's shaking her head. Please keep the bombast and theatrics down to a minimum, Mayor Welch. This is from Mayor Welch, from a couple of years ago. This is a direct, this is from her Twitter account, directly, where she called me a fuckboy. You can see it, right? Right there? Fuckboy. See that right there? Okay, this is one of the many insults and name-calling Mayor Welsh has directed against me and other people, and she's done it before our Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct, and she's done it after our Code of Ethics and Conduct. She called me a racist, she called me a liar, she called me a misogynist, and all of that is against our Code of Ethics. The same law that Councilmember Pryforce, you are censuring and sanctioning him for right now, but you, Mayor Welch, are guilty, more guilty than Mr. Pryforce. I mean, it's, if you're going to have a law, you are constrained, as well as Councilmember Pryforce and everybody else. You're not above the law, Mayor Welch. You can't call people fuckboy, racist, liar, misogynist, and not violate the Code of Ethics. You're violating the Code of Ethics.
Thank you for your comment.
Hypocrisy.
Thank you for your comment. Any other member of the public wishing to make a comment can do so now? Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me. Can everyone please return to their seats? And everyone, return to their seats, please. Thank you. Would any other member of the public wish to make comment? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Members, I turn to you for deliberation on the item. Vice Mayor Moore?
As we've just seen and heard, Member Pryforce is very passionate, and his words clearly resonate with many people in this room. Unfortunately, in this instance, Member Pryforce's actions do not match his words. The ethical violations described in the resolution are factual and quite serious. The behavior described is corrosive to the function of this council and the government of this city. Member Pryforce is fond of talking about how open and transparent he is, but not disclosing your source of income, who is giving money to you for political purposes, how much you have received, how you are spending it, as we are all required to do by law. That's what we all signed up for, okay? This is not open, it's not transparent, it casts a shadow when he votes on items before this council. This is a basic concept to prevent political corruption that I'm sure everybody in this room can actually agree with. I implore Member Pryforce to match his actions to his words and provide the information being sought by the FPPC investigation so that this council can carry on the city's business without further distractions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other member wishing to make a comment? Member Carr?
I am one of the people who's been required to file my FPPC forms like the rest of the council members. I know that the FPPC has an open case against Member Pryforce, yet time and again, I have not seen, when I checked the city's website, his 460s have not been filed, and he has used his FPPC numbers on materials that indicate that he is running for mayor. People have called me to determine if there is such an office in this city. So, due to the disinformation, as well as the lack of compliance with the FPPC forms, I do think that at least this hearing is warranted. I would very much like to see Councilmember Pryforce file his forms, and if he does so, I would not be inclined to go forward with the censure, but I would need some assurance that they are filed within 30 days.
I would like to note, this isn't about infighting, this isn't about disagreement. You can't disagree about the FPPC laws. You can't disagree about that. You can't disagree about the Brown Act. He was told by the city attorney by sharing an email, the contents, if you share this, you are violating the Brown Act. That's where the issue is. Said something about me? That's not where the issue is. The issue is with the violation of the Brown Act. The issue is the violation of the FPPC laws, and I'm very surprised to hear the tide has changed towards being transparent and compliant about financial contributions to campaigns because we heard a few people bring up financial contributions to campaigns, PG&E, or tenants, organizations that are against tenants' rights. This is the thing. You can disagree with who contributes to a political campaign. If you feel like that organization doesn't have the best interests of heart when it comes to the community, and you don't want to vote for that person or support that person moving forward, that's absolutely fine. That's your opinion to make, that's your opinion to form, but the thing is, you are allowed to form that opinion because we were transparent about who gave us funding. He has not given us that opportunity, unfortunately. If he has proof, he can share it. If he has proof he's not being silenced, this is why we're here, he has an opportunity to speak, he still has an opportunity to speak. No one is silencing him, he can sit here and he can defend himself, he can present materials, he can present proof that he has not done these things, he has not said that. He has not said, "I did not violate the Brown Act." He did not say, "I have turned in my FPPC forms." He has not said any of that. And I understand that members of the public have had very positive interactions with Councilmember Pryforce, and I'm very happy for that. I'm very happy that he has helped you in different instances. I'm very happy that you have a positive relationship with a local representative, but that's not what we're talking about today. That's not what we're talking about today. That, please, please. We, excuse me, I'm speaking. I have allowed everyone else to speak, I am speaking. We are here about very specific violations that are not reflective of how we are supposed to be as council members. Would any other member of the city council like to speak? Councilmember Pryforce?
So, I'm going to wait until everyone's done, so that there's not a whole lot of back-and-forth, and because people need to go home, they need to feed their kids, and so, I'll let you all go, and then I'll go.
Member Batters?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everybody for coming out and participating, and I would align my comments with comments that have been made about being supportive of people in local office. It's very hard to be a public servant. Being a public servant is a sacrifice for a lot of people. It's more challenging for some people than others, and there's reasons why we have inequitable representation in government at times. So, I'm happy to hear that Councilmember Pryforce has the support of many members in the community. That's a positive thing, I think. What I am hoping to hear tonight is some accountability from Councilmember Pryforce for the things that the mayor has outlined in her notice for this event. When we undertook the council Code of Ethics a couple of years ago, before, actually before almost every member of this council but me was on this council, we agreed to agenda that item and send it to our committee to work on, and we had several committee meetings about it, and we developed this ordinance that we brought to the city council. And at the city council, there was discussion, and there were some amendments that were sought by Member Pryforce and other people. We accepted and approved all those amendments, and in the discussion, a couple of members of council had a bit of a back-and-forth about concerns about the conduct of people. And at the time, I was serving as mayor, and my comments were to not weigh in on the personal disagreements that were coming out through that discourse, but to focus on the fact that this is supposed to be a tool that the community has as a last resort, that it's supposed to be a tool to help deliver transparency and accountability, and that the purpose of the tool is to serve largely as a reminder to each of us who seek and obtain public office of our duty, legally, fiduciary duty, ethical duty, moral duty, and our common duty to one another in the community for how we are going to conduct ourselves. And that spans a number of things, that includes things that the mayor has mentioned, adhering to the laws and rules that govern how we comport ourselves as members of the council. That relates to how we conduct our financial affairs in a transparent and accountable manner, and that also relates to how we treat members of the community and members of the council. I agree that I have not heard facts stated that contradict the things that the mayor has alleged at this point. I'm obviously still listening and open to hearing those things, and I would just share my personal experience, which is, it's a rather, it's a rather hard thing to listen to and believe that people here are here for the right reason when the things that they're saying are repeated false statements that the person who we're trying to bring forward as a member of this council with us have made and disseminated and repeated many times over. As a person who has sat quietly and has not engaged in any of the online disinformation that has been shared repeatedly over the past couple of years about the city, the staff, and our community members, it's been a very challenging experience for someone who has served on the council for many years to be here in my last council meeting for this reason. And, as I said at the council meeting when we adopted this, the purpose of this is not to create the rules for a game. The purpose of this is to remind each of us what our accountability is to one another in the public, but it exists for the purpose for us to hold one another accountable when, as individuals, we refuse to do so ourself. I don't love the idea of censure as a remedy, I don't believe that it is the first thing that we need to do, but we do need to comport ourselves in a way that complies with all the same rules, obligations, and transparency requirements that everyone else up here is willing to abide by.
Any other member of the city council wishing to speak?
Actually, I feel like standing up, so... Thank you, everyone, for your comments, for being yourselves. Some of you have a packet that we have distributed around, and this packet is really important. Yes, thank you. And the reason why, and Yamal, could you save some of them for my colleagues? The reason why this is important is because we are a nation of laws, and seeing that we have two attorneys on our council, that it's really important that, as a nation of laws, that procedure and process is important. I have the resolution for censure here. When this meeting opened up, was this resolution for censure read? No, it wasn't. It was a statement, right? Like, you noticed the whole Trump thing and everything, right? That was added and all this, it was a statement. It wasn't, and then Councilmember Batters then changed it to notice, because he probably noticed that it wasn't an actual resolution. And so, here it is, is that we have a statement that was read in a public meeting. Was I sent that statement? Was that statement provided to me? No, it was not. It's a very quick answer. It's a very quick answer. So this is important, especially as my colleagues who sound pretty determined to already make their vote. This is really important because it opens the city to litigation. And the city being open to litigation is going to be determined a couple of things. And it's really important because those that's why that's why I I shared that those your comments are really important. The things that you say are really important. What I say is very important. What they say is very important. What's not said is also important. What's not done is very important. So let's go over the charges. All right. The first charge is that I revealed confidential information about a closed session meeting. Now, according to the resolution, because I can only respond to something that I have actually read prior to this meeting, I cannot respond to new evidence. This is important because the 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 mayor shared evidence of that I sent this to this person, that person, that sort of thing. And this is really important because in the resolution, there was a lot of that. There was a lot of council members spoke to this person, or that person said this, and that person said that. Now, outside of this body, in in that process, when people are reviewing what's happening here, because this and this is really important is because it doesn't matter what the race and color my colleagues are, right? When someone's civil rights are violated, it just means that there is some sort of unfair treatment. And that is something that I believe will be in discussion, which is bias. Has tho have those who have made this vote, have they exercised some sort of bias that makes them unqualified to make this vote? Which is one of the reasons why I'm pushing for an independent public ethics commission. Now, on the first page is a a statement from a member of of Emeryville community, Kathy Kenny. If you can share, that'd be great. Councilmember Pryforce, I'm writing to request that you consider my input regarding an interaction with the Emeryville city attorney. During a phone call a couple of months ago, I shared with Mr. Kennedy my concern that some of our city officials have developed a dangerous pattern involving the public display of personal attacks, vulgar language, and unprofessional antics rather than legitimate political discourse. I express my opinion that these behaviors present an embarrassing distraction from the work our city officials were elected to perform and create a loss of public trust. I asked for this assistance in addressing my concerns. Unfortunately, his response downplayed the seriousness of my concerns as he relied on whataboutism rather than active listening or problem solving. He implied that nothing could be done because council members have free speech in this country, and should that I consider the tweets and public comments made by former President Trump? He explained that elected officials in Emeryville are not held to any standards of conduct and referred me to the city website where I could report a concern. Rather than reporting my concerns to see click fix, I'm turning to you. Thank you for considering my input. As for addressing my original concern, I implore the city council to seriously consider creating, implementing, and enforcing a code of conduct. So this is really important because this is in March of twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, long before same year, but long before, early in the year, before we had a code of conduct. So already, there are residents who are saying not only that the council member, my colleague, I I think she's pointing to Mayor Welsh, council member at that time, that not only is she uncomfortable with her behavior online, and it's going to be really interesting because because I'm sure that during the discovery process, they're going to ask how many letters like these has the city received about my behavior or anything that I've said online? Because timelines are important. So we have now a code of conduct, and this existed prior to the code of conduct. Now, once again, the question will be around bias. And why is bias important? Because if you go to page three, which states the the Brown Act, the California Government Code, five, four, nine, six, three, it's really important, my colleagues, where it says a local agency may not take any action authorized by subdivision C against a person. And so up until then, it's talking about, oh, you know, you can't reveal what happens in 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 closed session. A person nor shall it be deemed a violation of this section for doing any oh, I'm sorry, as to the requirements of the section or otherwise have been given notice of the requirements of this section. Now, this is really important because also it says expressing an opinion concerning the propriety or legality of actions taken by a legislative body of a local agency in closed session, including disclosure of the nature and extent of the illegal or potential illegal action, which means that the first charge that is in the resolution, and then once again, I have not seen anything other than the resolution from you and from this council. I cannot respond to a statement that I have not received that was not written to me. That according to that resolution, which means that forming an opinion, like saying that I believe that what happened in closed session is unfair. According to the Brown Act, it states that I cannot be prosecuted, persecuted, or or a local agency or censured because I have an opinion. And this is really important because the Brown Act has very a very small window for whistleblower. And and that window is you can darn have an opinion. You could even say that that something that happened in in closed session is illegal. You can say that because it still be we consider it an opinion. Now, I cannot reveal the details of what that is, but for something like that to slip past you, that I believe is going to come to question. Now, why did it slip past you? In Emeryville, we don't have a big team. You don't have a a big staff. And so we have consultants. We consult out a lot, especially when it comes to some of our legal concerns. If you look at page seven of our staff report, no, actually, it's page, yeah, page seven. And so so I receive this staff report, and and it says, you know, okay, this is what's going to happen. And it asks, what is the fiscal impact of this censure? It's it's none. We didn't pay anybody. We didn't invite any expertise, anyone who could probably inform the the city attorney that, hey, look, no, there's an issue. You know, there's a whistleblower protection here that he can form an opinion. And that that is an issue, especially given Kathy Kenny's comment about how she felt that you defended that behavior. Now, I want to make it very clear that the city attorney is just doing his job. He's he's given direction, direction. And a lot of the direction, and I could ask you, because you're not getting the direction from me, you must be getting a direction from members, my colleagues, who you're getting direction from. But I won't. That's not I don't think that's really important. But what is important is that the city attorney is receiving direction from my colleagues or at least one or two of my colleagues. That is going to be this that is going to be a part of the discovery process. Now, should it be discovered that in the discovery process, that Mayor Welsh, for example, who just when I was running for office, worked with Diane Martinez, then council member, and Ali Medina, then council member, which means that I'm not a an elected official yet, I'm just a constituent, like, 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 you know, like many of you, constituent, which means I'm vulnerable to the actions of elected officials? That a a request was made for me to provide to sign a collegiality pledge, a collegiality pledge, meaning that when I go into office, that I will act a certain way. Now, this is important because I can disagree. I could disagree with, you know, the recall and, you know, MAGA and Trump and those sort of things. But the things I'm I'm raising is about what if you're in my seat? What if you have just become an elected official, but before you became an elected official, you don't know much? And so those who do know come to you and say, well, in order for you to get my endorsement, you have to sign this collegiality pledge. That is important because even though the collegiality pledge has not been considered a serious issue here in this body, what would it look like once litigation happens? What would it look like? Would it look like the person who asked someone to to sign a collegiality pledge is acting in a in a way that's non-bias? You know, the second charge is around FPPC. And I would tell anybody who's new in politics, fill out your FPP stuff, turn it on time. You know, it's not like a college paper where you, you know, you're like, okay, professor, can I can I submit this a little bit? You know, like, you know, like, submit it on time. And I can eat that. And that's and that and that's the thing is it's like is is I didn't submit it in time. But here's the thing. The FPPC know why I have not. Madam Clerk, when I submit my paperwork to you to provide to the FPPC, you have access to that paperwork, and then you provide that to the FPPC. When the FPPC is making is doing an investigation, do they provide you with any documentation that I may be providing to them? Do they provide to you as to that the nature of that investigation?
No.
And the reason why is because the FPPC is a state organization. It's a state body. And so when we take an oath of office, we are taking an oath of office for our jurisdiction. And therefore, when you begin to create, you know, criminal charges and censure chart and sanction charges, whatever, for something that happens out of your jurisdiction, that's problematic. Because the FPPC has information, they have documentation, they have a a history of emails and exchanges and my going back and forth with them. That's the reason why it's still an open investigation even two years later, is because they're considering all the paperwork that I've provided to them, paperwork that you would never have access to. Why? It's because it is outside of our jurisdiction as council members. So you are making a judgment based upon information that you would never have and never and and never gain access to because the FPPC would tell you. Now, FPPC has several steps that it can that they 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 recommend that you make in, you know, some signs of situations like this. So I had to ask the city attorney, have you communicated with this FPPC and have they provided a statement about my particular situation?
In response to your question, Councilmember Pryforce, no, I have not.
Then I'm done. Okay. So so here it is is then, but have they been communicated with? May I ask that?
Councilmember Pryforce, it's not my role to communicate with the FPPC, participate in their investigations, or to file any paperwork.
There you go. So how is it not his role, but it's theirs? And this and and once again, this is this is very important because in terms of like, you know, I'm Haitian, and I want to thank the National Haitian American Elected Officials Network, Sac Passe, to my brothers and sisters out there, to my family out there. When you're Haitian, you know, that's like a lot of immigrant families. You know, you really, there's only three things that you they they want you to be, a doctor, a lawyer, and engineer. And so I am a failure to a lot of Haitian parents and families. And so that and so whenever I show up to, you know, especially events, I have to explain what I do. Like, I remember running keynote labs. I had to explain what being a tech entrepreneur was. And they, oh, you, you are not the doctor? No, you're engineer, you're engineer. Who do you work for? I was like, no, I'm, you know, I work for myself, you know? So the National Haitian American Elected Official Network has a lot of lawyers, a lot of lawyers that I have access to and have been have been preparing me for this discussion. And I mean, and I'm and I'm and I don't just mean like personal injury lawyers and, you know, I mean lawyers who look at ethics, who are who have not only just been in office, but they have seen how litigations go wrong against a city when they don't act right or a county when they don't act right. And you'd be surprised how little, especially for you, those of my colleagues or attorneys, how the little thing can make it seem that there is reckless abandon. I love that term, reckless abandon, as to what kind of risk you are give you are providing to the city, you are putting the city in. Emeryville, our vacancy rate is is very high compared to the to the rest of the region, you know, in terms of our businesses, a lot of empty storefronts, spaces, I mentioned that. We have a budget shortfall, eleven point eight million, I believe our consultant shared. Our home values have also slipped, worst in the region. Can the city afford a litigation, especially one around civil rights? That's what you have to determine. That's what you have to figure out. Well, one, did the city violate the Brown Act, right? Two, has the city been acting out of jurisdiction? I want to go to Sam Gould. You know, you heard from his wife, you heard from Sam. So I like to share some communication from Sam Gould because several times the mayor has said that, oh, well, the problem with Klima Pryforce and Sam Gould is that Klima Pryforce does not agree with something that Sam Gould said, you know, or you know, this is disagreement or or Klima Pryforce said something about the city, that sort of thing. So I have a comment, so page nine. This is from Sam Gould. Kalima, now, the entire time I'm, you know, I I I remember I played I posted a comment and and I believe it was an article about our our vacancy issue. And then Sam Gould, Sam Gould responded, and I then shared with him some issues that we have in terms of our black homeownership rates in Emeryville. Kalima, that and and I think this is important because this is prior, this is, he was just, he he just joined the committee. He's a committee member by now. Yeah, he was a committee man by now. Yeah, yeah. With the these comments, yes. You know, here and you know why? And they're saying that's not true? Because these comments then lead to emails with timestamps. Yeah. Actually, this is stupider than I thought. This is a graph for percentages over time, so obviously, if new apartments get built with people move in, we disagree. we disagree on a lot of things, councilmembers. But have I ever called you stupid? No, I would never call you that. Would you be okay with a committee member calling you stupid? And then here's the thing. When a committee member does do that and you ignore them, you hope that it just goes away. Kalima, I can't stop thinking about how bad this graph is, so sorry I keep spamming. So here it is, Sam. You are admitting to spamming me. Are you trying to tell me that 2019, you know, he goes into this, whatever? Now, once again, I, I ignore Sam Gould. I'm dying laughing at this. Right? So he just keeps going. So now let's go into the actual communication. You know, where I say, hey, Paul, I'm attaching a communication I mentioned between Sam Gould and I on Nextdoor. This is April 19th, 2023. It highlights my concern that he may not represent Emeryville in ways that are becoming of a committee. As you can see, when I decide to no longer engage with him, he kept pressing on in a way that was disturbing. I don't think this should disqualify him. You know, and I think I, I said this because you were, you were, I remember you were applying. So correction, you were applying to be a committee member. So your application was already in. All right? So to disqualify him, but I think he needs to hear from you on how he should and shouldn't communicate with a council member and that he represents Emeryville now in his online communications. So Paul says, hi, Kalima. I'd be happy to talk with him about decorum. I don't have his contact information, though. Could you send it if you have? If not, I can catch him at a B-PAC. Why would he catch you at a B-PAC if you weren't already involved in city government in some sort of way? Okay. So then comes, so that's April 19th, 2023. Then comes another communication. June 5th, 2023. Hi, Kalima. I'm sorry to hear that he's been commenting on your posts. I will talk to him about being polite and I, and remind him that he's, of course, he's able to express his opinions as an individual and that doing so thoughtfully is important. Hopefully, that will calm it down and there won't be a need for more back and forth. Thanks for letting me, Paul. All right. And I said, hey, Paul, Sam Gould has popped up again on social media making comments on items I've posted. Right? And so there's this communication between myself and Sam Gould. And this, and this is really important because, you know, elected officials are a little bit different in terms of how we interact with the public. But this is still, this is still, I believe, according to the League of California Cities, this is still a workplace environment. They still consider this a workplace environment. And so if someone is messing with you, who you work with, and you go to someone who you feel should be handling it and they don't handle it or their behavior, they don't do anything about it. Right? If the work environment works right. Right? Then HR or other people step and they actually do something about it. If it doesn't work right, then you have to handle it yourself. And so, and that's what I did. Because I'm from Brooklyn. And so I go to the B-PAC meeting and I talk about decorum. And it's really important because, you know, I talk about decorum and according to, and I believe the, the minutes of that B-PAC meeting are here. Regular meeting. It's, the page number is enlisted. I apologize. But it says, Monday, July 10, 2023. And it says, public comment will be received from Kalima Pryforce and John Botters on decorum. Evidence. There's no evidence. There's no evidence. There's no witness statements. No statements whatsoever. And so this entire, and I'll wrap it up. This entire thing, but this, whatever this is, has been done without providing no evidence to me prior to this meeting. No statements, nothing. Right? Our law enforcement work hard, but even in their minds, when they're dealing with a perp, they know that the process of how they handle someone is important because when it gets, when it hits the court, they don't want somebody who hurt the public to just get away scot-free simply because the process was somehow circumvented or if there's any evidence of bias. And so what you all saw today, I mean, think, I mean, I mean, just, just think about it. Think about a court of law hearing the council member compare me to Trump. And that not be some sort of sign that bias is, you know, you know, I can, I can go on and on and on, you know. I only have a budget. And so, you know, these charges are ridiculous. They're ridiculous because even after the Code of Ethics was formed, Sam Gould in January 2012, I mean, January 12th, absolutely pathetic an elected official is celebrating someone being run out of office with death threats posted on the front door of their house. Pryforce has absolutely no shame. Where's the Code of Ethics? So, you know, and I have several other examples. But this is one of my favorites and it comes from Mayor Welsh. Now, you all saw Brian Donahue, you know, have the sign of the, you know, of the F-boy comments. Right? But, I mean, you know, Councilmember Welsh says, what we could say, well, this happened before the, the Code of Ethics. Right? And this is also another issue with the Code of Ethics called statute of limitations. Because my paperwork for the FPPC was submitted prior to my receiving this censure. Also, very interesting that a court wants to know, why did they wait until election night to do the, to do the censure? Could it be that they were running for office and they were worried about how a censure and sanction would be perceived by the public? Thus making a censure political in nature? I mean, you just need, I mean, you just, you don't need a whole lot for litigation. You don't need a whole lot. But it's interesting that in terms of the statute of limitations. So, so not only there's that, but also during this, several charges, it just seemed very interesting that many of these existed prior to either the Code of Ethics being formed. But during the Code, during the Code of Ethics, Mayor Welsh, you know, on, this is the 4th of April. Berkeley, you know, this is in response to, because I mute all of them on social media. It's because, one, I don't have, I don't want to hear, see some of the stuff that they, they post. But it's also a Brown Act. I don't want to hit like on something that they post and that sort of thing. You know, to protect myself. So I don't know what they say. Right? So I posted about the fact that I was at an event that was supposedly progressive and that sort of thing. No black people. All right? Ilana, you were at that event. And Councilmember Welsh says, Berkeley lost a lot of its black population due to the bad housing policy. Here is kicker. You and your fellow segregation forever ballot measure buddies support. I'm from Brooklyn, yo. You don't call my friends segregationists. Do they look like segregationists? But here's the thing. You didn't just say that they were segregationists. You said, I'm a segregationist. Fourth of April, during the, while the Code of Conduct is active. Now, you may say, well, the difference, Kalima, is that the Code of Conduct, you know, you have to go through a process where someone, a council member has to complain, you know, file and that sort of thing. Brian Donahue, you filed complaints. How was that received? They ignored it.
I filed a complaint against the mayor.
Yes.
Councilor ignored it.
Councilor ignored it. Okay. Can you see? I mean, just think about the people of Emeryville for once. What you're bringing our city into. We are already struggling financially and then you have the audacity to put us in some sort of legal jeopardy. You're not thinking about the city. You're thinking about yourselves. So I dare you, I dare you to censor and sanction me. And then say to the people of Emeryville that you're thinking about them.
Members, did any of you have any other questions or comments?
Make me a rich man.
Member Bouters?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the city attorney.
Chairman, Councilmember Botters.
Thank you. The first is, does the re-lease of closed session discussions rise to a level of whistleblower status?
Not in this instance. No, it does not.
Okay. And then in the case, just like the status of the law, if you could summarize for me, statements by elected officials that have not been authorized by a full council that come from a closed session? What is the status of that?
So I believe what you're referring to is there was an email exchange that Councilmember Pryforce referenced about a member of the public emailing me about the conduct of council members in statements they made publicly.
Yes.
And there is U.S. Supreme Court precedent that involved Donald Trump in which the court held that the statements outside of public discourse or outside of a council meeting that have not been authorized by the full council attacking other folks or other individuals or other elected officials does not incur any type of civil liability to the city or any other political entity. That's because the city cannot control the speech of elected officials. And if they choose to engage in certain type of speech against other elected officials in the public realm on Twitter or other kind of social media sites, that that, that the city does not incur liability as a result of those statements.
I have no other questions, Madam Mayor.
I, Mayor Moore?
So I did not hear anything that contradicts or even addresses the statements of the resolution. I heard discussion about being singled out to sign a collegiality pledge related to a political endorsement. This is mine. This is the one that I signed. I'm not sure why that makes anybody special. I heard grievances about online comments. I heard legal threats to the city. The FPPC financial disclosure forms are posted publicly and they are either missing or woefully inadequate in the case of Member Pryforce. Member Pryforce has been asked to address this many times over the last year or more and he has failed to do so. Madam Mayor, I call the question and I move approval of the resolution.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have some questions of the city attorney.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The questions I have are, was the draft resolution served on or provided to Councilmember Pryforce?
Yes. The resolution, the draft resolution before it was published in the agenda on November 26th was provided to Councilmember Pryforce on November 20th.
And was he provided an opportunity to provide a rebuttal statement to everything that was laid out for the public in the resolution?
Yes. Councilmember Pryforce was informed that if he would like a statement or any other written communication to be posted along with the agenda item on November 26th, that he was entitled to provide it to the city by November 25th and we would include that along with the agenda packet.
Has Councilmember Pryforce been advised that he has the same access to the city attorney as the rest of the council members?
Yes. The city attorney serves at the pleasure of the city council. We provide legal advice to all members of the city council individually. We can answer any questions they have and I treat that as confidential.
I have some questions of the city clerk, if you will allow, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead.
Was Councilmember Pryforce provided the oath of office?
Yes.
At that time, was, did he take the oath that he will fully and faithfully discharge the duties upon which he is about to enter as a council member for the city of Emeryville?
Yes.
And does that include filing the FPPC forms as all council members do? Either the city clerk or the city attorney?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. Does that include filing?
Of the FPPC forms. Let me ask it another way.
If I can clarify?
If, if a council member does not file an FPPC form in the manner that they are required to do, who reports the council member to the FPPC?
I do, as the elections official for the city of Emeryville.
Thank you. I second the motion.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
I just wanted to point of procedure his hand.
Madam Clerk, Member Pryforce.
Thank you. And so the, the, the Brown Act violation being, you know, this sort of communication between me and this person, during the resolution, I mean, in the resolution, the, there wasn't an issue of naming Mia Esperanza Brown and Calvin Dillahunty. Why is it that the person who received this communication, because I haven't gotten any evidence? What is their name?
I'm sorry, I think you'll need to speak with Mayor Welsh regarding the resolution.
Yeah.
Devin Murphy, Councilmember from the city of Pinole, shared it with me.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. I, so for us to have a proceeding and I not receive not just this evidence, but other forms of evidence that were pointed, other statements that were made during, for the draft resolution, that it goes both ways. That the city also has an opportunity to provide evidence. And that's, that's something that's really important. Without that evidence, then I cannot respond to something. I cannot respond to hearsay. And that's really important. That if I am going to address something, I need to have all the facts in front of me because that was actually mentioned earlier was, you know, about facts. I don't have that information in front of me. So once again, so without the, without any information, you know, no witness statements you know, no, no witness statements, and without confidential information in terms of closed session, what is that confidential information? Yeah, it, it, it looks like the decision has already been made, right? Right? But, you know, it's just, it's just really important that they're making a decision that, once again, as I shared, harms, harms Emeryville. So, you guys can continue. I won't stop.
Mr. City Attorney, I have a clarifying question. The email that was sent on October 21st, where Councilmember Pryforce states verbatim, "I will, I plan to share this email publicly," you did tell him that he would be in violation of the Brown Act, correct?
You know, again, this is confidential communication, but if the council would like me to waive that disclosure, I'd be happy to do so.
In order...
Yes.
Doing that in an open session, does that waive everything about the Brown, the meeting? Or it will only waive the communication?
If you want to limit it to the communication at issues, since that seems to be the point that you'd like to make, we can limit it to the communication regarding the violation of the Brown Act.
Members, is there a majority support to waive that confidentiality of the communications?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I provided advice that the, under state law, confidential information means a communication made in closed session that is specifically related to the basis for the legislative body of a local agency to meet lawfully in closed session. And as a result, council members, the city council may not, without the authorization of the entire city council, disclose information obtained during the closed session or the substance of the discussion that occurred in closed session. Only the city council, acting as an entity, may determine whether to disclose information obtained in closed session or the substance of the discussion. Unauthorized disclosure by a member of the city council or staff person attending the closed session violates the law and may potentially lead to disciplinary action. And I cited California Government Code Section 54963.
Thank you. Member Pr-
Thank you. I just have a couple other questions for the city attorney. Just to clarify, this is not a judicial or quasi-judicial proceeding of any kind?
Correct. This is not a civil trial. This is not a criminal trial. The only requirement is that the council member be provided due process and an opportunity to respond to the resolution that laid out the various factual allegations. And we, the council member has been provided two opportunities to do so tonight, both with providing a statement to the council, is also afforded the opportunity to provide a statement when the agenda was, was published. And the council member is also entitled to participate in the deliberations tonight on the censure resolution.
My follow-up question is with respect to the resolution that you produced with the mayor and sent to Councilmember Pryforce and was noticed publicly. What I'm hearing is an allegation about the factual allegations. And I guess my question is that the items contained in the resolution are sufficient to provide the notice as to what is being brought, and that every single detail about the facts behind those things is not necessarily need to be in the resolution or provided in advance. It's part of sufficient notice, correct?
Correct. This, there's no entitlement to discovery or other type of evidence other than what was provided for in the resolution that's consistent with state law for these types of matters.
Thank you for answering my questions.
So I have a question. So when, oh, go ahead.
No, I called on you.
Okay, thank you. So when, when the city attorney provided a statement about the Brown Act, which was the advice that we were given, and I think it's really important, so according to the League of California Cities, we are supposed to receive an ethics, I believe, course that is required, I believe, after, is it within two years of being a council member? Are you, are you aware of that?
That may be through the League of California Cities, that they offer that to elected officials.
Okay.
And that, that's up to them, whether or not they choose to attend those training sessions or not.
Okay, got it. Okay, so then, so just a quick show of hands of those who did receive that kind of training. No, okay, yeah, because I didn't receive that kind of training. So which means then you then advised me to, to, because I had an issue with what occurred in, in closed session, you advised me not to send that information out to the public. Now, the timestamp of when you advised me, and then, and now that we know that it's, it's Devin Murphy, when did Devin Murphy receive my communication?
I, I don't, I don't know what transpired with Devin Murphy. I don't know when that communication was made.
Got it.
All I was just informed was that the discussions regarding the closed session were publicly released.
Got it. Okay, so then you said you were informed. You were informed by whom? You said that communication is now open, right? You can, you can share.
So I believe the mayor has indicated that she was aware of this public release of the closed session discussion.
Okay, great. So then, then Madam Mayor, when did Devin Murphy receive this communication? Was it before or after the, the counsel that the city attorney gave me?
I have no idea.
You have no idea? Okay. So then, and I think that that's what the, what's, what's important is that even though you don't consider it as sufficient information, when I'm just now hearing about this and learning about this on, you know, at this meeting, and then you, there's still missing information, inaccurate information, if I don't have that information, then my colleagues also don't have that information. And so there is still incomplete information. There is still something that we are not aware of because you're making a decision based upon this particular charge, but it sounds like all the facts aren't in.
I'm not clear how you would like me to respond to this. This is not the city attorney's resolution. We are not making the factual allegations. This is something that was requested and brought before the council for consideration.
Oh, I, I, it's a great observation. So the resolution was then not, this, it's not the city attorney's resolution?
We are asked to review resolutions. We don't prepare the resolution. The mayor brought the factual allegations and asked that they be brought before the city council for consideration.
Got it, got it.
This is not an action that's being brought by the city attorney's office.
Got it. But on this draft resolution, it was only your signature that was on that draft resolution?
Correct. It, it was as to form legal. Again, this is not a criminal or civil proceeding. You are not entitled to discovery. There's no requirement of discovery. The allegations were set forth on violations of the Brown Act. And that's what the council is considering tonight.
So you will receive a resolution when you don't have all the facts and, you know, information? You will just, you'll sign a resolution even if you don't have?
I was, I was made aware of the public disclosure of, in violation of the Brown Act.
Yes, but you didn't have?
To support that fact.
Because I asked you some, one of the facts, but you didn't have all the facts. You didn't have all the information.
I'm not sure I understand. I was made aware-
So I'll ask you the question again. When did Devin Murphy receive this communication before? Was it before or after you advised me?
Again, I did not, I don't follow Devin Murphy's Twitter account. I am aware that there was a public release of the Brown Act viola-, of the Brown Act discussion that was made publicly. If you'd like me to check my file, I can let you know when I receive that information. But I did receive information that there was a public disclosure of the, of the closed session discussion.
Well, it, it, well, it doesn't matter when you received it. The matter is, because as you said, that the resolution was brought to you by, by Mayor Welsh, right? And it was Mayor Welsh who received the communication from Devin Murphy. So Mayor Welsh is the one who should have that information and provide that information to you as to when did Devin Murphy receive said communication from me? And was that before or after your counsel? Since we don't have training-
I mean, if we, if we want to back up a second, I mean, all council members have already been informed about the confidentiality of closed session discussions. That is a, that is a Brown Act requirement just as public meetings are to be conducted in compliance with the Brown Act. And I believe all council members are aware that discussions that occur during closed session are treated as confidential.
Yes. However, in the resolution that I was receiv-, that I received, in that resolution, it made mention of the communication that I, that I made to the public about what occurred in the Brown Act. But I don't know whether or not that communication is based upon an opinion or actual confidential detailed information because I do not have that information in front of me. Now, member Bouters has said that I don't need to be provided with sufficient information. Can you see why we need an independent public ethics commission? Because this is bananas. This is ridiculous. And that, that we need sufficient information for the public to be able to make a decision. And so then, communication is happening that I'm not privy to, right? They, they, there's still facts that they haven't revealed to me. And yet, for any member of this council to make a vote based on that, there are, there are juries that would not convict based upon what's happening here. And, and so I do not, and so I do not know what the model is that they're using. Yeah. And so, so I just wanted to make that very, I just wanted to make that very clear. And, and you, you know, it's time for us to all go home, and I'll let you all proceed. Thank you.
Member Bouters?
Do you have, through the mayor, I'd like to ask Councilmember Pryforce one question. Did you or did you not send an email with confidential Brown Act communications to Devin Murphy?
I do not know what is confidential information because I was not, I was not, it was not shared with me what is confidential or detailed information. Because as I said, according to the whistleblower act, I can share my opinion about what happens, but I don't know exactly what is confidential or detailed information.
And just to be clear again, the law is clear that there's no whistleblower act in sharing closed session information, correct?
Not in this instance, that's correct.
Okay. And that, and I will make it clear that the Brown Act actually does say that my opinion can be shared about what happens at a closed session. And so, for example, being yelled and screamed at in a closed session, if I go to Devin Murphy and I say, "Hey, I'm yelled, I've been yelled at and screamed at," is that a violation of the Brown Act? According to the Brown Act?
I would just say, as an elected official, you are not, you are not subject to the traditional rules that apply to unlawful harassment that would apply for, to city staff. You are an elected official, so you're treated differently under the laws for workplace harassment.
But that, see, but that's very different because the legal counsel that I receive is that there's a difference when you're an elected official between legislative actions and what they consider as administrative actions. And so legislative actions, elected officials do have some level of immunity from. Administrative actions, the things that we do that don't have to do with passing a law, those, for example, that some of the things that happen in closed session, we are, we do not have immunity from. Is that correct?
I'm not clear what you're asking. Are you saying that as an elected official, you are?
Yeah, are council members immune from litigation based upon administrative actions that are non-legislative?
Between each other?
Between each other, between the public, any administrative actions.
So I would just say that council members that may have a disagreement between one another are not subject to workplace harassment rules. That is outside of what state law provides for workplace harassment.
Okay. Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, and I think that what you're feeling, I believe that, yeah, it brought to the court of law, yeah, many people will feel the same way, whether it's a judge or jury, many people will feel the same way.
There certainly may be other rules that apply, but certainly, but not workplace harassment. City officials in their discussions among one each other, among each other are not considered employees of the city, and the typical workplace harassment rules do not apply.
Okay. And I think that's really important because then your statements, you know, would be evaluated, you know, should this go to litigation. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution with an amendment to add a whereas or a resolve clause. It is hereby further resolved that the city clerk is instructed to mail a copy of this resolution to every address in the city of Emeryville. That's my motion.
I'll second the substitute motion.
Call the question.
Madam Clerk?
Doesn't matter at this point.
Madam Clerk, we have a, we, quiet, please. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
On the substitute motion, Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welsh?
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 9:10. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.